All right, I will call the meeting to order if everyone could please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, the republic, one nation, for God, physical, clear day.
Commissioner Tindaro, could you please welcome everyone to our meeting this evening? Mike, please, Mike, there you go.
Sorry about that. Good evening, everyone. I'm Lorraine Tindaro, County Township Commissioner. And I welcome one and all to County Township Board of Commissioners meeting, which is today, July 11th, 2024. We welcome all present in the building and all here in Zoom land. This is a safe space for all reasonable discussion of concerns affecting Calum Township and our community. All shall be heard and treated respectfully, so please respect all, all who speak. So when it's your turn, you will be respected as well. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Lorraine.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda, citizens be, be heard. For agenda items only, anybody here in the township building? See any hands raised at this time, any in Zoom? None at this time, moving right along. Engineer, do I have Ross online? Welcome, Ross.
Good evening, commissioners. How are you?
Excellent. How are you doing?
I'm doing well, thank you. For tonight, we have the topic of the 2024 road program. And so on June 25th, we did receive two bids for the road program and the low bidder was Long's Asphalt, which is the contractor that has won the bid for the past several years. So they've been doing a great job for the township. Very familiar with them. And their pricing was very competitive. Their, their base bid and add alternate combined were a little under what we had estimated for the base bid. So what that means is that we're definitely under what we'd allocated and the whole project, including the add alternate, would be able to be funded with the liquid fuels funds available without any additional from the general fund. So, so based on all those findings where the pricing and the contractor, our recommendation would be to award the bid to Long's Asphalt. And if that were acceptable to the commissioners, the amount would, for the base bid and for add alternate one, which is to make sure we do Suzanne Drive, the cul-de-sac road, those, the combined amount would be $345,905.35.
Commissioners, any questions? This time, residents, any questions here in the township? Under this time, Zoom? Just one question, because I noticed on the, the alternate was Suzanne Drive. What, what streets do we have listed on this road program this time around?
Sure. So, so the program in total is Ridgeview Drive, Longview Drive and Morgan Drive. So those are the base bid and then Suzanne Drive is the add alternate. So the, this 345,000 or so dollars would include all four of those roads.
Okay, perfect. If there's no, oh.
No comment. I just turned him over.
Okay, more coming back?
Yeah, he left his packet in the area.
Oh, okay, you still looking for that? I will pause for the vote, just in case.
I guess I'll, I'll ask a question while we're waiting. Longview Drive, we were only doing half that road, is that right? Are we doing the whole?
That's correct. Yeah, thank you for clarifying that. Yes, the, the Longview Drive portion is just from the intersection of North Longview to the cul-de-sac, since the, the western portion of that road was in good condition.
Okay. If no further questions, entertain a motion to approve the base bid at 294,451.30 with the add alternate of $51,454.05 with the total bid of 345,905.35.
So moved.
Then moved.
Long's Asphalt, so moved?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Tindaro, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion's good, five zero. Thank you, Ross. That's all we had for you.
That's all for me for this evening. Thank you very much.
Great, have a great evening.
You too. Take care.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, township manager, what do we have?
Good evening, commissioners. Short agenda items for this evening, really three main topics. The first is a discussion we have in the workshops. This is a potential change to ordinance and zoning regarding medical marijuana vape shops and the like. After a discussion with the township solicitor, Kristen Camp, she indicated that she's going through a similar type of discussion in another Chester County community. They're a little further ahead in the, in the process, but she is looking at trying to implement some of the language that they're working on there here. So she did ask that we postpone the discussion on this topic until the next meeting. By that point, she should have the language drafted to a point that can be reviewed by the board and we can have an in-depth, comprehensive discussion about the agenda item and the pros and cons.
Excellent.
Be fair, yeah.
Yeah. Commissions.
Yeah, comments on that? So they, they can weed out all the issues there. As Adam points, yes, exactly. All right, well, good, good, okay.
Unintended.
I didn't pick up on that, thanks. Really didn't mean, but it's my humor. Entertain a motion to table.
Some moved.
The move?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Aye. Motion's tabled.
All right, thank you. More to come.
All right.
The next two topics related to funding opportunities associated with the Lincoln Highway improvements. As we discussed at prior meetings, we were able to successfully submit an Arlie grant application. This is the red light enforcement funding opportunity. Now it'd be dedicated towards two sections of Lincoln Highway, the east side and then the western side of that highway, where there's limited lighting and limited pedestrian and cycling bicyclist movement in those areas. Total grants, funds requested came just shy of 1.5 million. If approved by the state, we won't find out until later on this year, towards the end of the year, but it would be a significant investment in some of the infrastructure necessary to really improve the safety in those sections. As the, as the chief has mentioned in prior meetings, it is a dangerous area that there have been some concerns in the past and this is something that he very strongly supports and submitted his support for the application. Moving forward with that, we had discussed submitting a multimodal application to DCD. This would be a larger grant application. The Arlie grant is focused on infrastructure and safety improvements, whereas multimodal can go towards some more decorative features, sidewalks, decorative lighting, for example, more permanent safety features along intersections and crosswalks. We will, we would be working with Gilmore Associates on the cost estimates associated with that, that fund. And let's do it at the end of the month. So the next item, 2.3 on the agenda is an action item. And in order to support their, well, support, we had, there was a PSA approved for three, not, not more than $3,000 for meetings and work associated with developing the cost estimates for the Arlie grant. In order to support the necessary work for the multimodal, they're recommending just amending the Arlie grant PSA to incorporate the multimodal. So it would be a, not, not exceed 6,000. So essentially rolling both applications into one PSA.
And the benefit of rolling them both together at the same time?
I think it's six in one hand, half a dozen in the other.
Okay.
I think administratively on their side, it may be a little easier to, and for, from finance, from a billing perspective, they could code it all in the same, but I think it's largely, it's no, no additional cost or, or change really. But their support in the Arlie grant was, was very helpful. They were able to develop those figures in a way that I feel if we were approved, will be incredibly beneficial. And very timely putting together the necessary, you know, supplemental imagery for that application. And then of course, having an engineer steal on the application does, does help from a PENDUP perspective.
Can I ask a question? So is that $6,000 just to do the specifications and engineer designs? It's not the grant amount itself, it's just for the specs, for the things that we would like to use the grant?
The, yes, that's correct, Commissioner. It would be, we had two meetings with the Arlie grant, so it's paying essentially for the time during those meetings and then the work done behind the scenes to crunch the numbers. As far as we're submitting, I think it was 2,500 feet and the one section 3,000 and the other, how many lights do we need? Does it meet PENDUP requirements, what specs, things of that sort?
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? Exciting. Reach out here. Township, any residents have comment, questions? No hands raised at this time. Denise, anyone online? The action item, we can vote on that. And well, let me ask you this, any other discussion on the multimodal? Fund grant itself for the 1.5? No comments from commissioners?
No.
We're just all excited.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, this is. We're basically featuring the Lincoln Highway corridor with most of that grant money to improve sidewalks, lighting. The whole deal.
Yep.
Residents here in the township, any, any comments? I know we discussed it prior at a previous meeting. No, they're all excited. Everyone's jumping up and down here. So, anyone in Zoom? It is.
Light up Lincoln Highway.
One additional thing I'll mention that I think is, it demonstrates the regional support for this type of project. As we received word, there was a TC DI grant, transportation fund through the Delaware Valley Regional Transportation Commission that was approved. It's one of two projects in Chester County. This is going through the TMAC, the Transportation Management Association of Chester County. And they're focusing on Calum, on Lincoln Highway to do more or less a feasibility study for how to improve safety along that entire corridor. The benefit to us is it's money that will not have to come out for that feasibility, will not be money coming from county residents. But we will benefit from that. We can cite the, the study in any future applications. I think it brings validity for state applications and county support, because they will be involved in the, in the development of that feasibility grant. So they'll become familiar with the roadway. And when they see an application across their desk, it's not going to be the first time they're hearing about it. So it's exciting news and I think it will go towards building that motivation, that, that momentum towards long-term substantial improvement for pedestrians and motorists along that road, that roadway.
Excuse me, Don, it, it might be a long shot, but we had a brief conversation about it some time ago, about seeing whether or not we could get Amtrak interested in making a local stop in Calum Township. With the, you know, the development, the number of ridership, I mean, it, it has changed drastically from when they did a study many, many years ago. So, and we have the parking, we have the, a beautiful train station that I know it's not used to its capacity.
I did have a conversation with the county, brief conversation, and I do think that if that work such as this will go a long way towards that. I think one of the challenges of the train station right now is it's, unless you are directly by, they, they really want to have walkability as well. And in many sections of the roadway, it is, you're walking on the shoulder. If we're able to really demonstrate safe and successful movement for bicycles, pedestrians, not just vehicles parking in the lot, which is very true, a lot of Amtrak stops, I'm thinking of along the corridor. Parksburg does not have a, a great deal of parking.
And Coatesville definitely has very little.
If we can, not only in terms of overflow parking lot ability, but also demonstrate that it is receiving pedestrians, cyclists along the roadway safely, it really strengthens the argument. So I think it, all this goes hand in hand.
Yes.
And it really strengthens any argument towards demonstrating it would be a, not just a, a smart idea, but a beneficial idea financially for Amtrak and for the ridership of the entire region.
Thank you.
One, one thing I, I was quite taken by was that the TC ID grant to TMAC is focused on Calum Township. When was the last time anything focused on Calum Township? This is great. This is really, this is a big deal. Yay.
You can clap, you know.
We're all excited. It was an exciting meeting. Just a, a quick question, the Coatesville train station, are, are they, are they going to accept Amtrak?
Yeah, they already, yeah, they already have.
They already have Amtrak.
Oh, they already do?
Yeah.
It's, it's believed technically considered a flag stop.
Yeah.
Where you can wave them down.
No, we actually just bought tickets and the train did stop there and picked up. So it's not just a flag stop, you can actually go on their website and purchase tickets.
It is underutilized.
Yeah, they're already doing new train stations. That should be open in 2025 maybe.
Yeah. Is it?
Yes, they're doing a lot of development. They're working around the clock. Still think we would have greater ridership in Calum Township by a long shot.
Yes, Cheryl, it's our metro here.
Yes. Being a man of my word, I promised on Facebook today that if anyone came to the meeting, we would keep them updated on the Phillies score every 15 minutes.
Okay.
It's now three to one Phillies.
Oh, go Phillies.
Do we have action item? Any, any other comments? I don't mean to cut off.
Excited about it.
All right, entertain a motion to approve the project 2400538. Change order number one to, for the increase of $3,000 for Gilmore and Associates.
So moved, second.
Now moved by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Evans. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Next on the agenda, board, board minutes to approve. We have the May 30th. I know there's a couple minor changes, which are acceptable. Any commissioners, any comments? If not, entertain a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Minutes have been approved. Now we have the June 27th board minutes. Any corrections, changes? If not, entertain a motion?
Removed, second.
Moved by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Evans. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes have been approved, five zero. Tony, what are you running? Take care. And next on the agenda, check approval. We have a check.
Now we can approve that trail.
Yes.
Tony's.
And the candy cane holiday lights.
All right, so we have check run 52318 to 52397. I did not see anything standing out. Commissioners, any questions? If not, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Aye, checks have been approved, five zero. All right, board liaison reports. We can start off with Park and Rec.
All right, good evening. As usual, Abby in her absence is probably thinking about more things to do. Right now, we're preparing to get ready for our 16th Annual Calum Township Community Day on Saturday, September 7th, 2024, from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM. So if you're out there in Zoom world, we're still accepting applications from vendors. There'll be lots of entertainment, free activities for children of all ages and fireworks. So we're looking forward for all of our families to come out, let's get together, celebrate the Calum Township community at large, gives us all a chance to fellowship with each other before the children are probably back in school, but before activities really get underway and it's coming near the end of the summer quickly. So we want to take this time to have all families come out and just enjoy one another before everybody gets busy with the fall events and activities. We're also have two more Art in the Park events. And that seems to be going very well, as it will be exhibited as the nature of Calum. So a lot of the art projects that the children have, they'll be on exhibit during the community day. So you still have time to come out and participate as a family. The next event will be held Wednesday, July 24th. And the final Art in the Park event is going to be on August the 21st. And also, we're going to be getting ready for our annual night out, national night out, where we'll be co-partaning with our police department. So we'll be coming out and having a good time that night on Tuesday, August 6th. And there'll be fireworks again. So we're just going to light up the township and just have fun and come out and, you know, just show our support and appreciation for what our police department does and listen to Chico Vibe and some of the food vendors and trucks and enjoy each other again. Thank you. As far as for CAG, the meeting, Don was the star of the show. He was, he, he made it happen, you know? It's just like when he shows up, he's really prepared to take care of business. So I, I appreciate that he takes time from his schedule. I don't know how he does it, but he shows up at all the meetings and he's on top of everything. And we're really fortunate to have such an outstanding manager on board that has taken Calum by the horns. And he got everybody up and running. So I, I appreciate him a lot. He's everywhere and that's what we need. So with CAG, they were just basically reviewing all agenda items, talking about the trash collection, how we can beat the pants off of Bliskies and all these other people that are doing trash. Yet to be seen, but there are some studies that are being conducted where it is working in, in some other boroughs. They're also looking at other options with the animal control. I mean, these agendas, they keep going around and around and maybe one day they'll just really strike fire. But they're, they're excited about it and some organizational, reorganizational structures at CAG. Looking to invite more bones into the organization, you know, it was kind of just limited for a while to just townships. But they're looking to grow and, and people are really coming with great ideas. But it's all right to have the ideas, but we got to get them employed and get them moving. And right now, that's what we're doing, just reinventing the wheel with CAG. Thank you.
That's, thank you, Jane.
Thank you, Jane.
Municipal Authority, apparently I did not bring my notes. No. Wait. I have, I have no idea. But Dara, I do remember there are still two townships that have not turned in their Act 537, so we were still waiting for that. And of course, they're still trying to work on the expansion or the upgrades to the system. As far as the Fire Board, we had a, a quick meeting in the beginning of July here. Basically getting ready for the budget season. The Fire Board likes to turn in their budget around August, so Lisa can get a head start on that. Because our budget, budget season, Lisa apparently wants to get that, get that started a little bit sooner than normal. And, and the Fire Board does want to try to budget in two additional full-time folks starting next year. So looking forward to that. All right, Historical Commission.
Hey, yeah, Historical Commission keeps on rocking and rolling. We met on Wednesday, June 19th with a full house. Mainly, we're still coming back down to earth after a wildly successful America 250 picnic. It's back at Davis Farm, June 29th. Over 108 people registered and a few more just showed up to be a part of history in the making. Our seats at the longest picnic table in Chester County were filled with happy faces. Strangers, neighbors, out-of-towners, folks from all walks of life came together under the trees to celebrate our great nation. We got lots of positive feedback and suggestions to use for next year when we hopefully do it again. State Senator Katie Muth, County Commissioner Moskowitz, the State House Reps, Otten and Williams, came out to support our efforts and to help with a reading of the Declaration of Independence. When they come out, we must be doing something right. Here's to Calum. Couldn't have done it without our partners and friends at Spackman Davis Farm and a very long list of people who I will post somewhere, because I'm afraid I'll leave somebody out if I do it right. Schoolhouse tours continue to be a big draw, even in all this heat. The next tour will be Sunday, August 4th. Our July meeting will be next Wednesday, the 17th at 7:00 PM. You want to find out what we're doing and we're not just like looking up dates and stuff, we're having fun. Come on out, join us here live or from home, I assume, or a group of doers who have a ton of fun getting things done and never met a roadblock that could slow us down. We'd love to have a few more doers join our team. Lastly, I almost forgot. Just County Planning Commission is now in review of the draft historical preservation work. So we should have something back from them soon.
That's it.
Great.
Mark? Lincoln Highway.
So we met last, last night. And we were supposed to meet last week, but because of the holiday, we pushed it back one week. One thing before I give my report, Commissioner Moskowitz appreciated our passing Complete Streets, the county plan. So I had a discussion with her at the picnic about Complete Streets and they were happy to see that we passed that resolution. Last night, we talked about the multimodal grant, the DVR PC and the Arlie grant and, you know, steps forward and, and what we do. Adam then showed us a way to look at old pictures and we went down a rabbit hole, looking at old pictures of Lincoln Highway from the 40s, 50s, 60s.
From the air.
From the air. So, you know, that, that site is pretty incredible. So we spent a little bit of time looking at different pictures and, and things. But we're going to try to set up a meeting with a couple developers to have them sit down and tell us why we're not getting the type of investment on Lincoln Highway what we want to get. What hurdles are they seeing? What, what can we do to improve the ability for people to develop those properties or redevelop the properties that are currently vacant? So we're, we're working on scheduling that. That'll be our next meeting. And I think that was pretty much it. So, yeah, we're, we're finally up and moving and I'll echo Jane's sentiment that, you know, without Don, we wouldn't be moving a lot of this forward. I appreciate his.
We'd be stuck in reverse.
The shout out. It's good. Excellent idea to involve the developers, businesses, you know, what's their, what's their take on it? What, what would make them come in?
So, and, and I think, Don, you said last night, the DVR PC, they'll have focus groups looking at when they're doing the study. So they'll, they'll have businesses, they'll have developers, you know, different citizens groups to try to formulate what, a plan for Lincoln Highway through that multimodal grant.
Yes, there'll be two committees formed, is my understanding. I'm, I'll have a meeting scheduled to, to learn much more about the process and timeline next week. But there's an advisory committee, which is a smaller group, it's the county, DVR PC, TMAC and township, and then a steering committee with an expanded group of businesses, residents, cyclist group for the county, some of the, the regional transportation, you know, would be involved. And so it's, it'll be a large net that'll be cast in public meetings and the like to get feedback and public input.
And I will say, just when Lincoln Highway was first formed, we, we did this, a little bit of talking to businesses, talking to developers. And that's how we got the Lincoln Highway ordinance that allows the board to waive some of the requirements. We also, you know, you, you go down to where Appetizers was and it used to be that you had a 20-foot setback from the, the road, a 20-foot setback from the back and 15 on either side. Well, by the time you do all that, you can't build on that property. So we, you know, that was the biggest. So um, we, you know, that was the biggest uh, hurdle that people had. Plus, if they needed a zoning relief, they had to pay to go to the zoning hearing board to then get the relief from the zoning hearing board to only come back to the board and it just created time and bureaucracy and red tape. So that's when we did the last update to the Lincoln Highway, we, we did that kind of committee. So we're going to try to restart looking at that again, um, and you know, try to get Lincoln Highway moving.
Excellent. All right, uh, and last but not least, Ingleside Golf Course. What do we have?
Hi, this is Lorraine. Um, wanted to let you know that J T Holsman, his last day as golf pro at Ingleside Golf Course is Monday, July fifteenth, twenty twenty four. Wish J T well. Give him a call or send an email. We are evaluating the need to backfill J T's position. We had a great month in May. The golf course made ninety three thousand dollars with twenty two thousand seven hundred rounds of golf being played. Greater Philadelphia, First Tee will be playing at Ingleside Golf Course. They are a program designed to teach youth the game of golf. Our next meeting is the last Monday of the month, which is July twenty ninth at twelve noon at the golf course. Feel free to bring your lunch and we have a good time. Check out the clothing and all the new things that are taking place out at the golf course. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorraine. All right, next on the agenda is additional business. Do we have any additional business at this time?
Just another update. It's uh, four to one Phillies on the top of the.
And well, just for the municipal authority, I, I should say this, as long as everyone can flush their toilets and it works, we're doing a good job.
Okay.
Let me just put that updated. I feel bad. Scott always sends me something and must have left it on my desk. All right, uh, next we have public comment. Any public comment at this time?
Be sure.
Okay. Just say your name and a, and address.
Uh, Malik. She's in third, third one, Edgeland.
Gotcha. Okay. All right, and try to get into the mic. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah, into the mic. Yeah, we do have some folks on Zoom.
Now, can I hold it? Yeah, right. Right like that. Um, so congratulations on all success, like golf course. Um.
Good start, good start. Okay.
So I could personally call the success because probably about a third of those balls end up at our program. Now, we're talking about, we came in, in April, okay? So two windshields replaced, one windshield had to be um, fixed and now my car, I found out today, it had not, has a dent in the driver's window, just it's all golf balls. Okay, it's perfectly, no, the, the holes are there and it's, it's getting expensive. You know, and you can't just call Allstate every time you have something, something broken. Nobody would show you after that. So we had, actually, we had emailed probably about two years ago, I had, when it was, I'm kind of getting the issue, but. Yeah, yeah.
Covid is when.
Yeah, Covid, yeah, yeah.
Everybody started golfing.
Thing open during that time.
Exactly.
And also, I think it, you know, my husband is always irritated by the damage and I am too. But it really is that I can't, we can't sit out on our back deck. They come over the house. We have two decks on our home. One in the back, uh, closer to Bailey and then one closer to our neighbor's home. And if you're sitting on either one of them, at any given time, a golf ball will come over our home to hit us on, on the, on the deck. And so I worry about us not being able, we've dodged balls coming from, you know, from the cars to the driveway. We all park on the street now. So if you visit our home during the day, we have a business and we're, we're at home most of the day. All of our cars are parked on the street. Hmm. And it's ridiculous. And our neighbors are looking at us like we're crazy, like you have this long driveway and nobody's parked there. It's because of the damage.
Yeah.
And so there's this huge opening right across from us. And we just asked, like we asked in April, for there's, for it to be closed, netted. Um, I'm sure there used to be trees there. That's what it looks like, that there were trees there at some point, but they're long gone. And so at this point, we really didn't expect for there to be anything done at this point, but we expected a conversation. We expected a return email. We expected, you know, plans for something to be done. Um, so I guess our next recourse is probably to contact Ingleside's insurance company and make some claims of the things that we've repaired um, the last year.
I, I know our township manager.
Yes.
So there have been, there's been some action associated with that and, and first and foremost, if you're available next week, our golf manager is, is out this week, but will be returning on Monday.
Okay.
So if there's a day that works best for you next week, um, I'll reach out to her and coordinate that and we'll come over. Uh, we did walk that, that hole right there to see, and you're absolutely right, there appears to have been trees at some point. They have come down.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if you've been over there. There is some irrigation issues. There's that hole that formed during the cart path. Um, that needs to be repaired and is planning to be repaired in the next couple of weeks. Uh, that fixed irrigation, there was runoff on that, that was created, that sinkhole. Um, that's been repaired to my understanding, or is, is about to be. And the cart path will be, we're going to use that opportunity to potentially relocate the tee box. Where it stands right now, if it goes towards the right, that, that I believe will go towards your house when their team gone.
And those students coming, when is that day? We gotta like, kids coming there, how to play golf.
So um, it, we are, we're working with um, our public works department to help facilitate some of those larger improvements that at home. Um, we, we do believe if we relocate the tee box slightly, it'll change the, the layout of the course, put it back behind the trees that exist.
That happened like last year, like so.
Almost two years.
Well, when you move the, whatever you call it, it just changes the type of ball you get, line drives or pop. That's pretty much what, and so like a nut, and that is pretty much what should be, I think, no. I spoke to her last, um, last year and she said they're going to plant trees. Then you talk about twenty years.
Yeah, we, we are planting and planting trees all over the course of, when the trees thereabouts expected to come in. Uh, but you're absolutely right, that'll take some time to actually have any sort of impact of real value. And even that, if they're like being popped up, it's, it's not going to stop those balls. Um, if, if, again, if you have time next week, perhaps we can even meet on at that hole and take a look at what's, what's being proposed, some of those changes. Um, and that's fine. We can walk, we, yes, uh, we can meet at your home and then we, you know, see that new, walk over to the hole and see what we're talking about doing at that hole. We do believe it, the angle will change towards the green. And so when people tee off, hopefully it would limit, it may not eliminate. Um, but relocating behind the existing trees hopefully will stop some of those balls from getting through, getting over. So putting the tee up against almost where the existing, those trees are um, should definitely reduce the number of balls. We can certainly talk about a net. They're very expensive and that is a consideration. Uh, it would be something, understood, understood. Um, that's something that would need to be budgeted until a long-term point.
Don, I, I just wanted to ask this question. How often are these balls hitting properly?
Every day.
Daily?
Last time, I, I bought my big box of balls.
I remember. Yeah.
You know, I can bring.
No.
Yeah.
Oh, watch.
Yeah.
And really, if it was just rolling over, I mean, you know, if it's on the lawn, we don't care about that. They hit our home daily. Um, of course, Saturday and Sunday worse, but even during the week, you know, there are people playing golf. And, and the thing is, we've caught people. Um, who have hit our home, you know, if I'm um, sitting on the couch, my dog is usually the first one to let us know. It drives him crazy. Um, and I'll get up and I'll run outside and a lot of times they're apologetic. I mean, it's not, they're not doing it on purpose. They're just awful. And because it's a public course, you get people who don't know how to play or who are learning to play. And so the, I'm telling you, we're not exaggerating. We'll be saying hundreds of balls amongst hundreds come over and our, you know, our land, land lawn guy, he, you know, they're riding on the big one and they're picking them up and then they usually just line them up along the tree so that we see they're there and we go and we put them in the box. But hundreds and hundreds of balls. So we always say, if people play golf, come on over, we can sell you. Maybe we'll help with the repairs. But really, I, 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 we just want a timeline for discussion. If you can, I mean, it's been three months and it's been nothing. So you know, we really do need to speed it up at this point. If, you know, the time next week, that would be great.
If, pick a time, pick a, pick a day, we'll be there.
Okay. Yeah. I'm trying to, well, yeah, no, my, my Dara Tuesday.
Oh, Nicole's not back until next week.
So next month.
I, I, I just wanted to say that, you know, I am really sorry that, that this has still gone on. You've had to put up with this and I, I mean, it stinks to have to make repairs, but I'm worried that one is going to get hit.
That's, that's.
And you know, something bad's going to happen, really.
Or he's also, you gotta pay attention when you.
And I'm hitting the head or something like that.
And thank you, thank you for your patience with us because if this was me, I, I, I've stood before this board before I was on it. I didn't sound that nice.
Or actual.
That's true.
Yeah, that's not.
Yeah.
Right, still.
And I'm nicer than he is.
All right.
Thank you so much.
So sorry.
Uh, we did have another hand raised. Alicia, come on up. You know, the routine.
Hello. Uh, wouldn't be an evening if it wasn't for me, right? Coming up here. Um, so Alicia Carini, one oh three, Arrow Drive. Uh, I was very excited about the Lincoln Highway Commission tonight. I think uh, the fact that you're meeting regularly is very exciting. And I love the idea of bringing the developers in. I think it's a wonderful path forward. The question I do have is, I just have a lot of curiosity about farmhouse. Uh, what's the status of them getting started over there? Because I do feel that the farmhouse and the Cohen property are both very catalytic to Lincoln Highway and that will help draw their people's interest. But I just didn't know. It seems like it's been a while.
Yeah, good, good question.
Uh, my understanding um, with the farmhouse is they're finalizing agreements currently, uh, which would should be the final stage of that and they can presumably start constructing as soon as they're able to. Uh, so that's just some legal paperwork that they're going through. I think it's in their hands to get back to us and then we'll finalize that. And the uh, Cohen property reference that will be on the planning commission agenda is a preliminary uh, next Tuesday.
Oh, yeah. Well, that, that's what we said we wanted to do. We set out to do it and now we're going to set out to get no more golf balls in New Orleans.
Right.
And it's four to one at the top of the eighth.
Oh, God.
Any other public comment?
Is that baseball or golf ball? No, I'm just kidding.
Larger white ball. No, no comments here in the township building. How about in Zoom? Any comments? And if there's no more uh, more public comment, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Good night.